Hold on, we have to have Bonnie read something.
Oh, I thought you said Brian, I'm sorry.
No, it's Bonnie. Oh, Bonnie. You're, you're, you're on mute, Bonnie, can't hear you.
No.
No. No?
No. No.
Well, we know what she wants to say, can we help her out? That the board meeting is going to be recorded?
Yes.
The board meeting is being recorded, so everybody knows that moving forward.
Way to step up, Steve.
Well, I didn't show it quite as eloquent as she did.
Steve, you're our first responder.
There we go.
There we go, alright.
Does anybody hear that feedback that's coming through? I don't know what's coming through.
Yeah, that's bad.
So if everybody's muted, keep it goes away.
Take a little bit of it.
I think it gets especially bad with the phone calls in, if the cellphone or the phone calls are muted.
Actually, you can see it, John, I don't know if they're speaking next, but your microphone is picking it up. So if you mute your phone, I think it'll stop. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Alright, next thing on the agenda is Board Calendar Public Request Summary. Any questions on the Board Calendar?
No.
No?
No questions.
Next one is Public Request Summary, any questions? Are they all done? Alrighty, we'll move right along. Alright, Brian, now you're up.
Well, what I'd like to do, Stanley, is we are two guests, we're very fortunate to have our two guests with us this evening. We have Superintendent of the Puyallup School District, Dr. John Palm, and we have our Director of Facilities Planning, Brian Deveraux, here. And thank you, gentlemen, for taking time out of your busy schedule. I know, Dr. Palm, you have a town hall meeting that's, that's already started, and that you can only be here for a few minutes, but would you like to offer any comments at this time?
I would. Thank you so much, Dr. Posel and members of the board. I've wanted to share just briefly before Brian takes off. First of all, he, he's our expert here on all facility planning issues, and I've learned so much from him already, being in Puyallup just a short time. And then I also want to credit Dr. Posel. He, he came and met with me and helped me with kind of the landscape here in Puyallup to get started, and provided some mentoring along the way. So you've got a wise man who's a strong leader, and appreciate his, his guidance along the way as I've, I've learned the ropes here in Puyallup. But we, we definitely want to collaborate. I felt really strongly to, that we wanted to connect, and knowing all the growth that's happening in the, the region where we're talking about this evening, so that you could hear about where, where we are and some of the planning that Puyallup's been undertaking. And then, Brian, I'd just offer him to you this evening to, to just, you know, him to share information, but also you to feel free to ask any questions as far as details that you need to have as you move forward with, with the Ordin School District. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'll just segue back to you, Dr. Posel, and let Brian take it from there.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Palm. I'm happy to, to have Brian with us. As Dr. Palm said, he's highly skilled, and I started the superintendency in Puyallup in 2004, and he was hired in 2006. And he has truly been a great talent and visionary in the Puyallup School District. And so he's a very busy man, and he speaks very well of the master plans that are taking place throughout the region, and he's an expert, and that's why we're so fortunate to have him tonight. So, Brian, with that, I thank you again for being here tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. To get started, I'm going to see if I can switch over to our, our slide presentation. So let's take a look at that. Alright, does everyone see the?
Yes.
Yes.
Slide show? Excellent, we're, we're off and running. Great, well, again, good evening, my name is Brian Deveraux, as you've heard, and thank you for all the, the kind words. It's, it's been a pleasure to have served as the Director of Facilities Planning for, gosh, yeah, the, the last twelve, twelve years plus here in Puyallup. And at the request of Dr. Posel and Dr. Palm, it's my pleasure to share an update on the current and future residential development plans near Ordin and Puyallup School District boundary located on South Hill. That's going to be the focus tonight, and I know Ordin has some other areas with construction on the other hillside specifically. But we're going to focus the, the, our discussion tonight on the areas near Puyallup where we're familiar with. There will be about a twenty-minute presentation. It could be twenty-five, thirty, if we have some questions intermixed, but I would like to leave a few minutes, fifteen minutes or so at the end for questions and comment as well. So that's what you can look for me tonight, and like I said, if anything comes up during the presentation, feel free to, to let me know. So to begin with, we have this term here in Puyallup called the Sunrise Triangle, and it makes one of our board members, who's a pilot, a little bit nervous when I throw that out, but it is an area on South Hill where the Bethel, Ordin, and the Puyallup School District boundaries converge. It's a developing area that will take at least another twenty years to fully develop. Enrollment growth is expected in this area for all three districts. This map shows the Sunrise Triangle area, and if you can see my cursor. Can people see my cursor in this presentation? Alright, great. So you can see that the Puyallup School District is in yellow. If we come down, you'll see the Bethel School District boundary area in green, and the Ordin School District boundary area you'll recognize is in purple. This makes up the Sunrise Triangle area, this area kind of in between all three. So to provide some background, let's review some historical events spanning, spanning the past twenty years. Beginning in 2001, Pierce County approved the Sunrise Master Plan. The Master Plan plays a significant role in the future development of this area, which we'll cover in more detail later in the presentation. In 2004, a minor boundary change was approved by Bethel and Puyallup in the La Poma Furs community. In 2006, a joint resolution was passed by Bethel, Ordin, and Puyallup Board of Directors, stating the intent of each district to honor current boundaries except for minor adjustments. We will cover in the presentation a key factor that has changed since 2006 that may alter this conversation. And finally, in 2020, a minor boundary adjustment was approved between Bethel and Puyallup again, this time in the new La Poma Communities Development. This next map shows thirteen residential developments within the Puyallup School District alone that we are tracking. The Puyallup School District updates this information at least once a year to best predict impacts to enrollment in our student projections and in our capital facilities planning work. This next map was prepared by Terragon, the developer of the Uplands Project. It highlights the major roads within this region. So if you can see my cursor, I'd like to kind of just do a quick drive around this map just to make sure everyone's oriented on what is shown here and where we are. So my cursor's down here in the downtown Ordin area, and these major corridors or these major roads are shown in the dashed red or kind of purplish line. And so if we follow this road, we know that we come up the Ordin-Capousen Highway, and that joins into Two Hundredth. That Two Hundredth, if you follow it all the way west, is, you need to drive out all the way out to Meridian in order to get to this area that we're talking about currently from Ordin. You now have the option of either going east on, in the La Poma Furs area, or a little bit further north and head east on One Seventy-Six or Sunrise Boulevard. And then you would take, again, some streets that would eventually reach down to the South Sunrise area, which is in Ordin School District area or over into Uplands Three Twenty. And just to kind of finish the loop, we also have a connection if you go north up One Twenty-Second Avenue, turning into Military, going down into the Ordin Valley again, and then we see State Route One Sixty-Two. So there's one thing that's important that's missing from this map, and that is the Cross Base Highway Extension Road Project that was proposed in 2006, the year that the joint resolution was signed between Puyallup and Ordin, that would have connected Sunrise Boulevard and One Seventy-Six, which is, is this area right here, down to the Ordin Valley. So at one point in time, the county was planning a roadway that was going to come in different alignments at different times, but the most recent alignment was going to come down and through the Uplands Project, and there was going to be an extension that was going to come down into the valley. This Cross Base Highway Extension would have provided a direct route for students in the Uplands Development to Ordin and its schools. However, it is our understanding that Pierce County has removed this road project from consideration, primarily due to the massive cost to construct. Ordin's students in the proposed Uplands Development will be landlocked by the Puyallup School District. Parents and students will literally drive past Puyallup Schools on their way to Ordin, a drive estimated to be about fifteen minutes or longer. There's one other connection that will eventually be made, shown and indicated in this dashed green line that connects Two Hundredth and Two Hundred Twenty-Second Avenue. This will be a viable connection once both South Sunrise West and East and Daybreak fully build out and those road, that, those road connections are provided. The second Terragon map focuses on the major developments within the Sunrise Triangle. Let's focus on the projects on the Ordin side of the boundary, and I'll first point out the Uplands Project, which is outlined in gray here to the right. It is located east of Puyallup's Glacier View Junior High. The next two projects would be south of Glacier View and Emerald Ridge, which is South Sunrise West, outlined here in dark blue, and South Sunrise East. The final project highlighted in this map is Daybreak, which is also within the Ordin School District. Due to the proximity and the future infrastructure that will be constructed when these projects are built, most, if not all, of these new homes would be walking neighborhoods if they were in the Puyallup School District. That's how close they are. We, we, we bust a lot of areas within our own district. Ironically, this area outside of our district is, has, would have all the walking infrastructure there and would be within the prescribed distance per board policy to be a walkable community, which is interesting. The Sunrise Master Plan is approved for a maximum build-out of forty-seven hundred and twenty-eight units. Nearly twenty-three hundred units have been built and occupied to date. Eight hundred and twenty of the remaining units are within the Ordin School District boundary within those two projects, the South Sunrise East and the South Sunrise West Projects. That leaves approximately sixteen hundred more units that will be built and occupied within the Puyallup School District site. This next slide shows an aerial view of the Uplands Project. The photo shows the proximity to Puyallup Schools like Emerald Ridge High School and Glacier View Junior High to the west. Uplands will be built in phases. The first phase includes over three hundred homes and has received preliminary plat approval from Pierce County. The developer is planning to begin home construction before the end of 2022. One item to point out here is that developments like these, like Uplands, provide the needed infrastructure to build, such as sewer, water, storm drainage mitigation, and the appropriate zoning. These are the types of amenities districts should consider when looking to acquire property for their own future school sites. If we take a closer look at the Uplands Project, we find nearly six hundred single-family homes and three hundred and seventy-seven townhome or duplex units are planned. The remaining units in this area of Uplands are planned as age-restricted housing and considered of no impact to local schools. So what is the impact to a district like a project of Uplands? To answer that question, we need to know the type of housing being proposed, since the housing type will determine the rate of student generation per unit. For example, in Puyallup, single-family units on average generate close to double the amount of students that multifamily units will generate. Utilizing student generation factors included in Puyallup's capital facilities plan, we've provided an estimate of new students from the Uplands Project. My caveat to this is, is that this type of analysis should be run using student generation numbers specific to Ordin Schools. But this gives us and, and the board, an idea of the project impact. The estimate on this slide assumes a Puyallup school model of K through six elementary, seven through nine junior high, and ten through twelve high school. So there'd have to be some adjustments to these numbers to match a middle school model, but I think that you see and can understand that we find an estimated five hundred and fifty-five total K-12 students is what we estimate will reside in Uplands after full build-out, of which three hundred and twenty-three students are expected at the elementary level. And really, to start to wrap up here, and I can, I'll be opening up again for questions and comments. I have a couple of slides that talk about boundary changes, because this is an item that is, that was actually brought up by a developer in this region, had asked about what is the process, and I think it's good just to make sure that we all remember the process of what the state law provides. So to quickly review what the state law outlines in regards to boundary changes is that there are two mechanisms specifically outlined in RCW Twenty-Eight A that allow for district-to-district boundary modifications. The first is the citizen-initiated petition. In this petition, fifty percent plus one of the registered voters residing in the territory must sign the petition for it to be valid. The petition is submitted to the local educational service district. The affected school districts are notified of the citizen petition and must negotiate and reach an outcome within ninety days. If the school districts cannot agree on the transfer of territory, a regional committee from the local ESD will intervene. Given the geographical factors we have reviewed today, it is a possibility that the future residents may petition to modify the district boundary, most likely within Uplands, at, at which time both districts would engage in negotiations. And lastly here, the other, or second process of initiating a transfer of territory between districts is a school-district initiated petition. This is the process the Puyallup School Board followed, working with Bethel and modifying the boundary within La Poma Communities Development this last year, before the new housing was built and occupied. This process allows the school districts to be more proactive and potentially avoid a more confrontational process down the road. And so I would just like to go back to this aerial view and make sure, what is hard to see here, if you're not familiar with this area, is that we're seeing this two dimensionally. But those that are familiar with this area know that we've got the Ordin Valley to the east, and where the trees start is really where the, the hillside begins. And it's significant, we've got, you know, features like Lorenz Creek that runs east-west here, and there's some environmental protection that happens here. The majority of the Uplands Project is going to be built in the northern half of the project. There's some potential buildable areas on the south side of the creek, which would be somewhat separated from the rest, but still within the approved allotment that they have in terms of number of units. But that would be expected to become much later after that. So again, just understanding that we have the hillside that runs basically north-south, and that Uplands Three Twenty sits on the uphill side with now no future connection down to the hillside. And really, that really wraps up, and it gives us some time to, to get into any questions or comments that you may have about this information.
So Brian, just quickly, on, on, off the top of your head, how many acres are involved in the Uplands housing development? Do you recall that approximate number?
I don't, off the top of my head, Dr. Posel, but I could certainly look that up and get that to you.
Sure, sure.
In 2017, it's important to note that the developers actually upzoned the Uplands area. It was formerly zoned in Pierce County, this is all within unincorporated Pierce County, so Pierce County provides the zoning and does the permitting here. It was at one point zoned residential resource, which is the lowest density zoning within Pierce County. And that was primarily due to the fact that there was these environmental areas in and near, like the, the hillside, like the Lorenz Creek. And in 2017, that was upzoned. And so it was changed into, most of it was. I think there's still some small sections that are still residential resource, but a lot of it now is moderate-density, single-family, which just provides a little bit higher density and allows, you know, again, more people to be accommodated within that than would have been otherwise if it was in the former zoning. So that happened in 2017. And at that time, and at several other times in the past twelve years, I've had an opportunity in my position to reach out and to communicate with different administrators at Ordin. Jack Gilletti and Jeff Roll, and there was one other gentleman that I had connected with at one point. We've all had conversations and have been talking about this. But oftentimes what happens is Puyallup will get, receive notifications from the county on a project like Uplands, and at one point in time, it didn't even go to Ordin. So when we saw that, we made sure the county knew that was not part of Puyallup School District, it was actually part of Ordin, and they needed to make sure they routed it to Ordin. So there's been past efforts to try and coordinate, but now we're at the time with the first development on the Ordin side that's really going to be landlocked here, we're, we're within two years of seeing students. And, 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 you know, the intensity of this thing, you know, builds up in terms of, you know, how are we going to serve these students, and, you know, what's the best plan moving forward?
Brian, can you go back to the map with all three developments, three developments on it? And talk about just the time when you talked about Uplands being within two years? What about the other two or the other three developments, the South Sunrise?
Yeah, good question. So what I know is, and things could have changed since the last time I've had communication, but from my best knowledge, the South Sunrise West Project just received preliminary plat approval as well. So this is close to the same timeframe as the first three hundred homes within Uplands. So you're going to start to see with, when, we know that when preliminary plat approval is established, that, that's often the time, assuming that there's no delay in, in, in the market and they're not wanting to wait that out, if they're moving forward, that's when site construction starts. They have their entitlements that, you know, the county can't come back and ask for anything additional at that point. It is what it is. The developer knows all the rules and all the conditions that apply to the project, and they're moving forward with, with construction. A site construction for, you know, a project of this size, about four hundred lots in South Sunrise West, or about three hundred-plus unit lots here in, in Uplands, that's going to be, you know, take at least a year, if not more, you know. Oftentimes it takes longer than that, but if you're, if they're moving really quick, that's going to take a year to, to get that infrastructure in place. And then you have the final plat that has to be recorded once that infrastructure is in place, and then home construction can start, and we know that, you know, homes can go up as soon as three to four months. So with these others too, the South Sunrise East, I have not heard of a timeline yet, that will come sometime after. South Sunrise West, and then Daybreak, I don't have good information on the timing of that one. But what I would say is I heard, just in my recent discussions, that Lennar Homes may be the developer of that project. So we could probably reach out to them and find out a little bit more information on, on their proposed timeline.
That little neighborhood just under the word "school" in Ordin School District, that's my house.
So you, you know this area really well.
Yeah, this is my district, this is from a director perspective, so it's very interesting to me.
So an interesting item too about this Uplands Project is that I, it's conditioned, it's going to have two points of entry, primary points of entry from, you know, One Seventy-Six and Sunrise Boulevard or from Meridian. The first and only access will be via One Hundred and Eighty-Fourth Street. And if you're, again, familiar with this area, if you are out on Meridian, you drive east on Sunrise Boulevard or One Seventy-Six, and you go down the hill towards Emerald Ridge High School, down to One Hundred and Eighty-Fourth, and take a, a left here, or if you head east, you pass right by Puyallup, Puyallup's Emerald Ridge High School and Glacier View Junior High. We actually have a future elementary school property just north of that, where it says "The Crossings." That's a, about a twenty-acre piece owned by Puyallup Schools that hasn't been developed yet, that's planned as a, as a future elementary school. This road that will, that will be the only access into the Uplands up until I think they have to, once they build more than two hundred homes, then I think they have to have this other access that will come through the north, through an area plaque called "The Crossings." There will be a second connection here. But when, in terms of travel to Ordin Schools from Uplands, the quickest way is going to be by the Puyallup Schools, going down One Hundred and Eighty-Fourth. There's now a connection into La Poma Furs that's, you know, with, recent, within the last six months, that allows you to go through the former golf course area and out to Meridian, and then down to Two Hundredth and towards Ordin. That is the fastest route to Ordin and, and, and the schools that exist now.
Hi, Brian. Could you revisit, you had mentioned when a road would be going down to Ordin. Can you, can you revisit that again?
Absolutely, yeah. I think you're talking about what we call the Cross Base Highway Extension.
Yes.
And this cross, where that name comes from is this Cross Base Highway Extension was an east-west corridor that the county wanted to build through the base connecting to I-5, and it would have come east all the way into Puyallup, down into the Ordin Valley. You haven't heard a lot of discussion about that within the last ten years, because the cost for that, as they've really got into analysis and estimates of how much it was going to cost, has skyrocketed. I don't have a specific, specific number to share with you on what that cost, you know, may be, other than I have, have heard discussions about the cost being a, a, a factor that with all the other needs that the county has, it really makes it difficult, at least at this point, for them to consider that a viable project. So they're really looking at, you know, making sure that the existing routes down Ordin-Capousen Highway and down Military Road, for example, to Holly is actually going to be, you know, adding, some of the traffic from to Holly is projected to add traffic on South Hill through Military. So I think that we will see, eventually see some, some widening of Military there. I don't have any timelines of that. But to your question, in 2006, when that But to your question, in two thousand six, when that resolution by all three districts saying we're going to honor each other's boundaries, so it's clear to realtors, so it's clear to home buyers, so it's clear to families, you know, what district they may be in, because if you drive in this area, you feel like you're in Pualup. But we have areas like in La Palma Furs that really, it's the backyard fence that's separating districts, and it can be a little confusing. So it was an attempt to be really clear with the community about the intention of the school districts at the time, with the knowledge that they had at the time, and that was done in two thousand six. But at some point after that, this decision was made that that road wasn't viable, and so there really is no plan, there is no date for that direct route through uplands that would have gone into the valley to be built. So the only future road that, you know, that we, that would make it a little bit of an easier drive would be this other road that will be built as part, and this will be built in parts as the projects themselves are built, like South Sunrise West, like South Sunrise East and Daybreak. Once all those are built out, there will be a connecting road to one hundred and twenty-second. I cannot tell you what time that would be because I don't know when the last project, which I would anticipate either being South Sunrise or Daybreak to be built.
Thank you. That's what I was kind of looking for, I guess, is knowing that we're not going to have a relatively easy accessible way to get our students in and out until those last developments happen and those road structures are put in.
Correct.
Thank you.
I was wondering, in the uplands, is there, is there an area set aside for a school to be built there or no, because Pualup's counting on using their present schools?
So, good question. There currently is no school site that's been set aside within uplands or within any of the South Sunrise projects or Daybreak. It would have been, it would have been ideal years ago for that request to be made, and that request should have come from the Ording School District. Again, this is years in the past, we're talking a decade and before. But that time, not to say that there couldn't be some property found for a school, and I think that that's an interest, that that's certainly an opportunity that the board could take to take a look at that. But again, with the realization that to build a school, it's not just any site, it's a site that needs to be able to accommodate all the things that come with the school and all the utilities. But yeah, there's no school sites planned, and our approach to this point from Pualup has been that this is an Ording School District jurisdiction, because that's what it is. And that's what our resolution has said. But I think it's just a good time to take a look at all the factors here and to make sure that we're aware of the situation.
Any additional questions for Brian before he wraps up? A lot of information, Brian, to consume in a short period of time.
I had another question, Tony. Sorry to interrupt, but before we kind of close out, I just had another question about, I don't have any experience with homeowners petitioning the district for boundary realignment. And you mentioned that the, that there is a process for that, and that it's usually more efficient for districts to initiate that process. How long does something like that take?
I have the most experience with the district, the district initiated petition. There is a public hearing requirement that's typically involved in something like that. I think, you know, you would plan for about a six-month process if you were in cahoots about what was going to go on. But if, that wouldn't include any of the negotiation time if there's an attempt to try and, you know, swap property, for example. So it can certainly take longer than that with this last exercise with Bethel. And again, this was working with their staff and with their board in realizing that this property line that, or the boundary between, the district boundary was running through rooftops with this new plat that was going in. We wanted to avoid a situation like that and at least have some clarity about what, how, you know, any specific house was very clear which district that was going to be in. We really started that process in earnest in March in terms of working with the E S D and getting our public hearing scheduled, and then getting all the final paperwork to the E S D. It was approved by our boards in late July and early August of two thousand twenty. The boundary change didn't actually go into effect until November, the day after the election in November. So from that standpoint, you know, it took almost a year, and that didn't include some of the previous negotiations that we had about, you know, where that, where those shifts should be. Because in a situation like that where you're doing a minor adjustment, you're trying to, you know, have an apples to apples. If you're going to give some, you're going to take some a little bit. And that's the typical, with a citizen-initiated petition, it's probably around the same timeframe if it goes smoothly. But if you get the, if the negotiations can't be met within ninety days between the districts and you get a regional committee involved, I'm sure it would take longer than that.
And you mentioned land swap. Is there any part of Arland, like, is there any piece that we could trade you?
Yeah, the hard part is, is that you don't want to be, there's not a lot that's undeveloped that we share that, and we wouldn't want to be in a situation where we're moving entire neighborhoods from one district to the other, just to be balanced. That's not this exercise, at least, that's not my view of it. And to be completely transparent of where we are within Pualup, again, our communication with Pierce County and with everyone that's asked to this point is that this is Ording's, this is Ording's district. But we have had a study session with our board about this fairly recently. So this presentation you're hearing tonight is very similar to what they've heard in terms of information share, just so they're aware of what it is. Because if nothing were to change and the district boundary stayed where they were, my anticipation, and this is Brian Deveraux speaking, my anticipation would be, just based upon proximity, we would receive a lot of waiver requests into the district. And the reason I say that is because we have that situation in other parts of our district where we have schools that are much more accessible than maybe the neighboring district schools. And every district has that situation, or most districts have that situation somewhere along their boundary. And it has nothing to do with reputation, this or that, it has to do with convenience for a lot of families. And you can certainly tell that there's going to be a convenience factor here.
For Brian, thank you.
Well, thanks for having me. It's been a pleasure, and I, if you have any questions that come out, make sure that Tony knows how to get ahold of me. Make sure that you present those, and we look forward to working with each other in the future.
Thank you. This is very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, Brian, and we'll be in touch.
All right. I'm going to try and stop presenting now.
You have a good evening and enjoy your family tonight.
All right, I will.
See ya.
Take care.
Take care.
Okay, we're gonna have some hard decisions coming up here. Really hard. Moving along, we have the first read of, that first read of the board policy. Sexual harassment, any questions? I know yeses.
I had, I had one question, where it was page ten, the district's must, it was the fourth bullet, it said not restrict the ability of either party to discuss the allegations under investigation. And it was my understanding in the past, when there was an investigation, the parties were told that they could not speak about it, but now it's saying that we can't restrict that. So am I reading that right?
Kathy, this is a real significant change in the process for investigations, and that comes from federal sources from the Department of Education. And it also requires some new training on our part because it's, you caught it, it's a change in process.
Okay, and my other, the other things that I sent were actually more comments on how this would play out with the teachers, and they were just things to think about. They were not-
Yes, no, those were great, and I, I didn't get those responses back to Bonnie until late this afternoon, so, but I do appreciate the suggestions because one of the things that we have to demonstrate is how we share this information regarding changes in procedures and policy, and so I appreciate the suggestions. And sometimes the way we did things before are just as good or better, and we can use those old processes.
Well, I, I'm not complaining about the safe schools trainings. I think those are really good and efficient. What I was thinking is that when you're in a stressful situation, it's nice to just be able to open your drawer, get the handy-dandy guideline of what you need to do or why you need to do.
Absolutely. No, you're absolutely right, because there is an expectation that we should, our staff should be aware of these processes, and we, and we will have training throughout this year.
Okay.
We're still trying to figure out what the change in the law is ourself, and I have some more training to do this month to better be able to explain it to staff, so I appreciate those comments.
So will this, you said this is from the federal government? So is there any possibility this will be changed?
As a matter of fact, I, my understanding is that with the new administration, they're looking at the Title IX sexual harassment regulations and guidelines. Some of it could be done through executive order, but there are also some things that have been put in law, and that would take legislative action, and that may be now easier than originally anticipated with the new administration.
Okay, thank you.
You betcha.
Education Secretary DeVos resigned just recently, within the last few hours.
Oh!
There will be a new Secretary of Education, and I'm sure he or she will have a very long agenda and some things to fix right away.
Another cabinet member gone, okay.
He's going to run his own cabinet anyways, they don't keep the same people.
No, 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 mine not, in the next thirteen days.
Whole lot of time. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thanks for the good explanation, Lynn, thank you.
All right, we'll move along to reports by Marcy Bennett. School Budget One-O-One. Have any questions for Marcy? Where's she at? She's here?
I am here, yes.
Ah, there you go.
Hi.
There you go.
So I can, I feel like you guys have heard School Budget One-O-One a few times. I can go through the slides if that's what you would like me to do, or I could just answer questions about budget if you want me to do that, so.
Nice.
My question about budget is how are we going to pay for all of Matt's things that he needs in his technology initiatives?
That's a great question, Carrie. So in budget, when we know things are coming, we set aside. That's why we have set asides in our ending fund balance right now for things we know are coming. So putting a little aside every year when we know things are coming is the way to plan out, and so we have the money when we need it. Like we have for the turf or PTR portable roofs or PTR roof, we have money that we've been building up in our ending fund balance, and that's part of budget is, if you know it's coming, plan for it.
You're so great, Marcy. You know, she's all calm. We just plan for it.
You try to plan for it, you know, sometimes it's harder to plan for, it depends on the timeframe of planning that you have, but if you have time, then.
Well, hey, Marcy, let's get into, let's get into the financial reports, that's the juicy one.
The financial report for October is in front of you guys. It is a prepared by, there's, you know, and I think I've mentioned this before, our, our numbers right now look pretty good, but at the end of January, it's going to change because the money we're getting through apportionment from the state is based on our budget. And right now, on this report, it shows us that we are about a hundred and thirty, about a hundred and thirty-two kids under budget, and that reflection in apportionment will happen at the end of January. So January will be the telling point, really, on, the first telling point, I should say. We still haven't heard what's going to happen with transportation, or if the state, obviously legislature hasn't started yet, so we don't know what changes are going to happen to us, what they could cut mid-year on us until that happens, so. So it looks great right now, but it's not, it's not, not fake, but it's not real, so.
So we, January, we'll be crying and-
January, it will be more real, yes, because until then, we're based on budgeted numbers, and so apportionment will go, our January apportionment payment will be much less than we've been getting monthly, so we have to have a fund balance to be able to support a lower apportionment payment, which we have, because we have the set asides for the future things.
We have that ready.
We'll be crying in March finally, because that's when we'll see the numbers.
Is that the end of January?
Yeah, so school districts get apportionment from the state on the last working day of the month. So the apportionment report comes out about four days before from O S P I, so I'll know about four days before what we're getting at the end of January, but I have, I have a slight idea because I know what our, I know our enrollment numbers, and that's going to generate much less.
So Marcy, I just wanted to say to you, thank you. I have no questions. I just really, you have done such a phenomenal job in kind of breaking things down into small chunks that I have learned so much from you regards, regarding budget. I kind of run a small office, and accounting has always been my thing, and I was head-swimming, confused, drowning, you name it, and you've just done a phenomenal job. And I don't know if you changed this year's One-O-One, or if it's the same, and it just goes to show how much of an instructor you are to me, because I understood every single thing. It was really easy to-
That's great.
And you're talking a language I can understand these days, so.
That's great.
Fabulous job.
Thank you. Yeah, no, the numbers changed, the dates changed, some of the formatting probably changed, but not, not overall, it's, it's pretty similar to the last one you guys would have seen.
So Marcy, you mentioned that you have an idea of what apportionment's going to look like when it's recalculated. What idea?
My idea is that we're going to lose about eight thousand-ish per student, but the percentage we get per student is, because apportionment is different every month, we get a different percentage of apportionment every month. It's a hundred percent over the whole twelve months, but, and I don't have it straight in front of me, so I can't tell you the percentages, which I'd love to be able to just spat it off, but I don't have it right now. But we will, so we've been getting apportionment September through December based on budget, which is about a hundred and thirty-two students right now, and I think it's actually higher than that when I looked at January's enrollment, but I think our average is closer to one forty that we're under budget. And so you think eight or nine thousand dollars per student that we're probably going to- budget. And so you think eight or $9,000 per student that we're probably going to lose. That's my, that's my best guess right now. But there's other things, other factors that could play into it. They could change their mind. I've heard rumors of hold harmless agreements. Things change so much. I don't know which rumors will come true, but eight or $9,000 per student is my current guess.
So we're talking anywhere from 900,000 to 1.2 million dollars?
Possibly. So the other option, so I don't remember if you remember what I, there's a couple of board meetings in September where I gave you guys some numbers. And there was some, some thresholds that I said, okay, it could be here, it could be here. It kind of depends. Our K3 class size ratio is looking pretty good right now because we have some pretty low in-person K3 class sizes. And because of that, we're probably going to get more money than I budgeted for K3 class size enhanced funding. So that's going to take the, the, a brunt of some of the money. So it's going to bring us down a little bit. That's why I say eight to nine. It could be less. It could be, it won't be more than what we get per student. But it could be, it changes things because it gives us more money in a different pot. It's all big one pot, but it, the amount per student is different when you have K3. And I don't know how to explain that well enough, because I don't think I just did. But, but yeah, the, the numbers I gave you guys back in September, I think there was a couple board meetings, work sessions where I gave you guys some numbers based on what it looked like was happening with enrollment. And those still hold pretty true. And I can probably pull up my notes if you want me to look at that.
No, I, I was just.
Yeah.
Somewhat bigger than a bread basket, just trying to determine about where it is. It looks like even with that, we should, with the reduced expenses we've had this year, we should still stay positive in our fund balance.
As long as, yes, that is, that is my complete 100% hope. Yes.
Any other questions for her? None? We'll move right along. Steve, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening. I brought the A-team with me, Matt Hunbin and Tina Staria to answer any of your questions you might have relative to the technology status report update. I know I received a couple of questions and responded to those earlier. So hopefully those were helpful. And if not, please ask now. And I brought people smarter than myself to the table to make sure that you get a good answer. So. Anybody have any questions that you'd like to ask us about this?
Um, it wasn't a question. It was a comment. I just wanted to say, I'm really glad that the tech department is allowing, not allowing, providing some of the tech personnel an opportunity I saw to get a certification, because I'm really glad that we're providing them an opportunities to upgrade their skills. And I think some of us will remember, that was one of the things that PSC had some concerns about on that last engagement survey. So I'm glad that we're offering that. So, and I, and I did ask about training and I was very glad to hear that that was planned as part of it, because it's really hard to be handed some piece of equipment and not know how to use it. And basically you have to figure it out on your own. And so I'm glad that that's included in the plan, because it'll get more use that way.
Yeah. Matt, Matt kind of has that S on his chest for all the right reasons. In the, at the end of the day, he's only one guy. And, you know, he has more information in his thumbnail than most of us do around technology. And we really need, for the sake of the health, the technology health of the district, to provide some more training for our technology staff. And it does, it sets them up really nicely that they can actually support the system with that additional training. But we do run the risk that after they get a whole bunch smarter and certificated, that they might want to go out and find other jobs. So we'll have to try to build something into that so that we train them and keep them if we can. But.
Yeah, I just, I want to give just a little shout out. Amazingly, I had my first technology issue where I had to contact the, the team to get some stuff corrected for two of my kids and immediate response and resolution the issue within 30 minutes. So it was really good.
Well, I know, I know the question was asked earlier about, to, to Marcy, about how are we going to pay for all of these expenses that Matt's, you know, needs to cover and stuff like that. And ongoing costs for supporting technology at the district level, it's been pretty, it's very untypical that we've been able to do what we've been able to do out of the general budget. And in light of all of the needs that we have coming down the road, that is going to be very, very difficult to maintain. So at some point, maybe having a conversation around the possibility of a tech levy, how would we continue to finance this at a level that we continue to, to support and grow the technology in our district? Probably a worthy conversation to have.
I, I know that tech levy and technology and trying to keep up with the century that we're in is expensive and it's hard and it's always changing minute to minute. You can't buy a laptop without having it be not effective anymore as soon as you get it home, it seems like. But one of the things that I had in my questions, and I am not a tech guru at all. I know how to turn on a laptop and use a mouse, and that's as good as it gets probably. But when we're talking about supporting our school and our students, what, these things seem like they're really core items just in the operations of the district, but not necessarily, except for the obvious use of the Chromebooks for students and teachers in this time. It's not, it's all about operational. It's not about educational enhancement. Am I, am I correct in that? Or is there some educational enhancement that's part of this? I'm just trying to get a good grip on, are these like district fundamental needs just to keep, you know, keep things rolling? Or is there other things that are enhancing the kids' education? Because if it's not, then we would probably be looking at some of that as well at some point.
Tina, you want to take that on? Just in terms of the, just in terms of the, the instructional tech, the instructional impact around whether we have the technology for kids or we don't have the technology for kids?
Well, we have the technology, the devices, but there is the future that we need to, if you look at the very last item, one of them is kind of a way to monitor our students and to support our students when they're using the devices. So there are things that we could look at purchasing in the future that can support the actual learning part of it. There's the production of stuff. I mean, when kids make something, they retain the information more long-term than if they're just doing something or just reading something. So being able to make our kids more of producers than consumers, that might be what you're asking is, yeah, those are things that we should look at rather than just using a device for a device, but actually using them to engage our kids in deeper learning and more meaningful learning.
Thank you. Kind of exactly. Thank you for kind of taking my ramblings and kind of.
But it's definitely. Now the device is, now we need to broaden how we use them to engage our kids in learning.
Right. I just didn't want to, technology for technology sakes, just to say that you have all of the newest bells and whistles. I wanted to just kind of be able to see, have somebody tell me and draw those parallel lines to the students. Is having this increases their ability to learn by providing this kind of thing. So thank you.
Yeah, we can have them write a paper on the computer. And that's not going to do anything different than, you know, doing a piece of paper. But how can we transform that learning to go deeper? And that's what we want to use technology for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina.
Will there be any other questions for Steve and his group? Hearing none. Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
I just, just another comment. I'm always, I feel like I'm always 30 seconds behind in my comments. But, again, because I'm thinking as you're talking and I'm listening and I'm kind of going back to Melissa's point, this look, this appears. And again, I'm also not a technology person, but it's heavily weighted. It's like we rolled out all these Chromebooks and all this technology and hey, kids, you got to get this done. And teachers, you got to get this done. And now we need to catch our back, like our infrastructure system, catch up and create an environment for what's possible. You know, going back to Tina, what you said, you know, shifting it back to allowing the kids to learn around the technology. And so I'm kind of thinking, in the next year or two, we'll see a little more shift to learning tools. And then it'll probably swing kind of like a pendulum back and forth. Were, am I correct in that thinking? Is that something I can look forward to?
Exactly. The whole pandemic has done to us. It's forced devices into every teacher, every student camp. And now that they know who uses the device, how can we transform the device to really become a learning tool? So even though the pandemic has been, you know, not great on the technology side of the world, it's, it's going to really shift everyone's thinking.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Part of our technology plan, we had a multi-year phase in with teachers, even supported through the teachers negotiating agreement, their contract, to support their learning. And nothing accelerated that faster than the pandemic. It, you know, it went from being kind of a nice thing and a, a nice thing for those that were encouraged to take that on. And the pressure that administration was putting on teachers to dig in and the work that Tina had been doing to try to get people to show up to her workshops and all that kind of stuff, all that transformed in a, in a, in a minute's notice. And so we're hoping that a lot of that, 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 that we were able to experience during the pandemic. We just don't lose that when we go back to brick and mortar, that we're able to continue to use some of those learning communities through technology that became essential for any learning to happen. And so how do we transform the classroom through technology now as we anticipate we're coming back? Matt, did you have any comment regarding infrastructure relative to Carrie's comment?
Uh, I mean, the infrastructure obviously has to be there to facilitate the use of the devices by the students. And that pendulum is always moving back and forth. You know, you have to have the infrastructure. And then how do you use it? How do you get the kids engaged in it? And then it swings back as you have a new set of newer technology that comes in. So that kind of is constantly moving and, and how to really push it so that the kids are actually using that. And I think in the next year, that's our goal is to, now we have all the technology, we are one-to-one, every student has advice. Now how do we get them to actually use it to further their education? So.
Okay.
And I would, I would say relative to Matt's expertise, one of the items that we put on there, that we purchased in the last couple of years was the Nutanix cluster. And when Matt brought that forward, he was able to explain, hey, yeah, this is a pricey item. We didn't necessarily budget for this, but not only, here's what this thing will do, but this is how much money this is going to save us in the long run. Was the technology continues to change and some of these pieces come on board, you've got Matt who's looking at it through the infrastructure process, you've got Tina who's looking at it through the teaching and learning lens. And they've been keeping us pretty well poised. I think you've, you will hear staff comments about both of these people that they are absolutely irreplaceable and have been throughout the entire process of sustaining learning, teaching and learning during the pandemic. You will hear nothing but singing their praises from staff and, and whatnot. So I feel very fortunate to have these, these guys working with us. And, and I think we've got a good crew here.
Cool. And then just one more follow-up question. And you mentioned there's, there's a gas generator set up for 15,000. I just want to use that as an example. Is there also like a facility, like a construction charge that we'll need to fund in addition to that for like the pad and the fencing? And like, like there's some other costs that we can expect?
Yeah. And, and that.
We just be installing something on a rack in, in the server room. I get that.
Yeah, I think the, the generator would actually, yeah, they'd have to build out something on the roof because the generator goes up on the roof and they run the wires down. And I know they, we kind of got an estimate probably three to four years ago when we were looking into it. And that's around what it costs. So it's going to be a little bit higher than that potentially. But that's what I had, we haven't done another estimate for the cost of a generator. And we're working with battery backup units right now. But those batteries only last about, well, we, it says 90 minutes on the screen, but you get about 45 minutes out of them with full load. And so I'm trying to up that because now we have the voice over IP phones. And after that 45 minutes, all of our phones go down and you're, you're without internal phones to, for emergency purposes.
Yeah. I've lived through that scenario where all the phones go down. It's not fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just, just within the, this, the previous, I think it was last spring or something when we were in lockdown, we had a, we had a power outage, everything went down. We had just enough time to send out the communication to the schools and to families and everything went dead.
Yeah.
And, and that was with kids learning remotely. We didn't have any kids, well, we had, we had a few kids on campus that, you know, specific, but most everybody was learning remotely. So when that happens, when school's in session, it's like.
Yeah.
Much more. Yeah.
Cool. Thanks for answering my questions.
Will there be any other questions? Thank you. And then we'll move right along for accountability, collaboration, and transparent report.
Yes. Well, upon arriving, and I really had this conversation with individual board members, but I'd like to speak publicly on it. Upon arriving in March of last year, I quickly learned that it was the board's desire and there was a groundswell of, of support from the board members to increase the school districts accountability, collaboration, and transparency, and working with the public in all aspects of educating children and working on positive relations with the staff and union leaders. And so I owe it to the board for really serving as the catalyst for us moving as a district in the ACT initiative, because it was centered on the board's desire for change. And I think that we've made deliberate progress in many areas, as you've seen in the document that's been provided to you. And there's much more ahead before the year is out. And so I'm very pleased with the work that's happening within each of the departments. I'm very pleased in the work of our cabinet members and their leadership. And we stand ready to answer any questions or hear any comments from the board with regard to the document that we've been, we've provided you. And there'll be an end of year update, again, on the completion of our work for the 2020-21 school year.
Any question?
Um, I wanted to say, I really appreciate the framework and the way you, the choices of naming the columns. I really like that we're looking at outcomes, what we get from this, instead of just, it sounds like a really good policy. And I love the adjustments because education is all, is all about adjustments. Those of us who have been in the classroom, you know, every day is, every minute sometimes is a new adjustment. And so if a, a school district doesn't have adjustments as part of its outlook, I don't know that they're really being realistic. So I really, really appreciated that, Tony. And I, I love the fact that there's so much tracking of things being reported to us. I mean, it's not like, okay, well, we got the PPE. Well, now let's track it and make sure, you know, in the future, we'll still have enough. So we are, with our transparency, we're also being accountable because we're, we're making sure that, that we're using those resources.
So more now than at any other time, we are monitoring and adjusting.
Adjusting. I know.
By the hour, I assure you.
And that's, and that was apparent over and over. Like I, I made a comment about the K-12, um, curriculum and the flexibility built in that because, you know, it was a good plan, didn't totally work out, especially at the primary level, but let's make changes instead of just pretending it's not an issue. I love that we were adjustable for the lunches, even to the point where if it was boring, we looked at it. I mean, you know, that, that, that's really showing we are here to serve our community. And, um, and I loved that one of the statements was that you recognize that the different needs and developmental levels, that that affects staffing and caseload issues. Because every single teacher will always tell you, you know, that that is an enormous issue. And in the past administrators always said, well, there was a study that said that really didn't make any difference. I'm sorry, in your classroom, it really does. And it, and it also helps us, um, because we're not as competitive financially as some other districts around us sometimes. If we are honoring teachers' needs and issues, that is, that's a big plus for teachers. So I'm just, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for your comments, Kathy.
Oh, and, and the last one is blooms, Maslow over Bloom. Love it. And you know what? That's been true all along.
I know. Is that the truth?
But it's never been, it's never been.
Yeah.
As recognized as it is now, because for the family, for the kids, for the classroom, you have a kid in your class that hasn't eaten, you have a kid in your class that hasn't slept, you know? You can forget the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, we, what, as we, as I mentioned, uh, some of the technology advances that we've made, hopefully we don't lose those when we go back to the classroom. How are we going to think about, uh, you know, building on those experiences that we've had? Another one is what you're talking about, Kathy, which is social emotional learning, uh, where in different parts of our system, it was determined to be like school counselor's work. Um, we recognize through this situation that kids, when kids aren't learning in our current situation, it isn't just about, um, access to the material that the teacher's giving. It's about the environments that they're in. It's about their state of mind, um, all of those different things. And so we've had to kind of boost teachers', um, experience and, and understanding of that. We've got a teacher in-service day coming up at the end of January. And, um, schools are going to be, uh, other than the health training that Chris is going to be providing for return to face-to-face learning, um, schools are also doing social emotional learning as a follow-up to what we did in August. And so that's a, that's, you're right about that. When we get back into the classroom, what I hope is that we have social emotional learning savvy people that can, that can read a kid's body language, the face, their way they're dressed, what's happening. And if they're, they're, when they're disengaged, it isn't just because they don't want to be there. Uh, there's other reasons behind it. We're not making assumptions about their unwillingness or they're not wanting to learn, but that we also might start thinking about what are some of the other factors that are impacting these kids? And as teachers develop that lens of empathy and understanding that these kids are coming from all kinds of situations, um, and, you know, reach out through their, some of the, the skills and the strategies that we're building in them right now and how to build relationship with kids in a virtual environment of all things, um, what is that, how much stronger is that? Uh, when a teacher builds that into their repertoire on a daily basis, face-to-face with kids? And so that is, you, you picked on one really good there that I, I hope we become a very, very compassionate, uh, teaching and learning staff when we come back based on the experience that we've had. Um, we love our content and we love to, particularly at the secondary level. Uh, let's figure out how to love our kids as much as we love our content. Love our kids first and then, and then they'll love our content as much as we do, right?
Well, the other thing is I think that when we do go back, we're going to have to think about this as, um, trauma-based instruction, because basically these kids have been living in a, a world of trauma who, without, um, and they are not going to, how to operate in a classroom. They're not going to, they're going to need us to be there for them before they're going to be able to, um, open up and, and learn again and feel comfortable at school and feel comfortable, because this has been a scary time for children, whether they're in high school or kindergarten.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I had two comments, you know, one, I want to thank, um, Tony and staff. Uh, when you do these recaps of what's been going on over the course of the year, um, I felt like these were familiar, like I was recognizing that, oh yeah, we've talked about this. Oh yeah, we've talked about this. And so I want to tell you how much I've appreciated your communication throughout this process, because I felt informed about the, the topics that you've recaptured here. And, and like Kathy, really appreciate the reflection and next steps. So I want to thank you, uh, for that and also, um, to let you know how much I appreciate the vision for where we're going. I am a very forward-focused person and so I'll, you know, versus a checklist of things we've done or a task list of things we've done in the past. I want to, I, I want to know, spend all my time on what's next. So, um, I think like Kathy said, I appreciate the format. Um, oh, and then, then the third thing, um, this recap and this checkpoint during the year is very valuable to me. I know it can feel a bit repetitive for staff when you're like, I've already talked about this with the board. But I think it's important for us to see so much accomplishment, you know, captured in a document and to have an opportunity to celebrate your work and to say thank you and to, you know, ask questions as we move forward. So, uh, while it can feel, I think we, Tony mentioned before, possibly like a dog and pony show. Please don't feel that way because it is so valuable for us as board members. And it's important that we take the time to look at this. I read every line. So even though I don't have a ton of questions, I read every bit of it and I appreciate the work that's gone into it.
Right. Thank you, Carrie.
Point, Carrie, and, uh, I'd like to say this on behalf of Tony, if it's all right, just in terms of this being, I don't know, at least my fourth rendition of this here, it being an, or, uh, ordering. The, and Tony was, you know, when we first started thinking about this, you know, really anti-dog and pony. What is going to be substantive that we can provide the board of directors that we can report on? That we, you know, outcomes, you made the comment about loving the column adjustments, but you know, what are the outcomes and what are we learning from them kind of a thing? So around that, as we built this, you know, I haven't looked at this for a little while since we built it. But as we were talking, I was kind of reading back through it. And I can say based on all the ones that I've been a part of, uh, I like, this is good. I'm looking at this going, dang, this is good stuff in here. This is real, I mean, this meat, this has a lot of meat on it. It has a lot of meaning in terms of, you know, this is what we, this is what we plant. This is what we learned. This is why, this is how we're adjusting. Um, I can see this format living, uh, beyond, uh, Tony here. And, um, as one person who's been responsible to participate in it, this is the one I've been most engaged in and feel like it's not a dog and pony show, that it has the most substance for you, uh, as directors. But I can tell you as a, as a person who's done it, it, it has a lot of substance for me too. So.
Thank you.
I really appreciate how much it is related to goals and objectives and seeing results. I mean, uh, you know, what's the sense of having goals and objectives if you don't go back and, and monitor them along the way? And so I, I really, really, uh, as, as a former teacher, I really appreciate it. As a school board member, I really appreciate it because I see it as us working towards the things that we want to work towards. So thank.
And in this format, I think compared to previous formats, I like, this format captures the spontaneous, the hey, we've got an idea, this is going to matter for our staff and our students, let's do it. And I appreciate that. I, I don't want us to be so rigid in the future that we can't do that. And so I like.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're going to move in the board comments. Uh, right now is we come to the point where we have to get ready to negotiate and unnegotiate, come up with a, a package, a salary package and for the new superintendent. Uh, I was speaking with Carrie early today and what we want to do, two things. We're going to, on the 21st, we're going to actually sit down and, well, on camera and discuss a compensation package for our new superintendent. But on the 20th, Carrie volunteered and we needed one other board member to have, have a open house. So, uh, the community can get involved and let us know, uh, things they didn't like, the thing they do like. Cause I, I remember at the meetings, uh, that we had with the community, they, they want to be a little bit involved. So I think it's a good idea to have it on the 20th. The 21st, we actually come back and discuss the compensation package for the new superintendent. Lynn can get us all the information we need on how much superintendent make with a doctorate, how much superintendent, a new superintendent makes and all, all the goodies.
Yep.
Let, let them get us the range. How much they make is a matter of negotiation.
Right. Yeah. And that was, you know, the thought process. Um, we talked a little bit about having like citizen as part of the conversation. Um, and we also talked about a committee, which we don't really have the time to organize a committee. I mean, I reflected back, you know, Kathy, you and Melissa and I have talked about having a community forum where we, you know, open up, say, here's the information that we have, you know, that Lynn will be able to share. Um, what do you guys think? What's a priority for our community? Where should we land? Obviously we're, you know, we're not looking to the community to help us negotiate the fine details of a compensation package for a new superintendent. But I, I would like to hear priorities or, you know, things that are important to them and how we can stay competitive as a dis, as a district when we know surrounding districts are also looking for superintendents. And so I thought a community forum might be, um, something that we could do in the timeframe that we have. If Bonnie, if you're there to help us organize and Holly, you're there to help us communicate something like that. Um, I'm imagining something similar to what we did for the superintendent search forum, where we just do another virtual meeting and invite the community to participate. And hopefully we get some people with some great ideas and thoughts. And, and if not, we'll take the information that we have and work from there.
So I would, I'd love to be a part of that. Um, so if you want a few board members participating, I'd love to jump in with Carrie and do that.
Yes.
And then my other question is, would we be able to do that so that anybody who wants to participate can have a face instead of just a phone call?
Right. Yeah.
Is Bonnie, is Bonnie sitting with us?
I am. I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know what I did. Maybe Matt did some, he called, he called me. So that must have happened. I don't know. I'm happy to do that. And all we have to do is provide a link and they can Google me. It's as easy as that. So. I'm happy to do that. And I will contact you tomorrow. Carrie will be working on it.
That would be great. And, um, Holly, can you make it a Facebook post? I'd like to share it to my community. So if, if that's possible, that'd be great.
Absolutely. I'll start working on some artwork tomorrow and come up with something very attractive that will catch lots of community attention.
Very cool. And then Lynn, we'll need to work with you on kind of the, the information that we want to share as foundational details for that forum.
That'd be great. I'd love to, to hear your ideas and I can get the, the data for you.
Great. Perfect.
Thank you so much for doing that, Carrie and Melissa. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And we will bring, we will bring the forum comments, um, back to the group. So.
That's a great idea. Any other, go ahead.
When it comes to, um, advertising that, let's just make sure in big bold letters what the subject matter is so that hopefully we don't have other conversations.
Yeah.
Definitely, definitely.
Keep it focused. Yep.
I, I have a comment if nobody else is going right now.
Go ahead.
I was kind of surprised today when I, I checked, uh, WIA website to find out that they are advancing our athletic seasons based on Governor Inslee and the Health Department's new guidelines. So we will actually have athletic seasons starting on February 2nd. And we're three weeks out. Our facilities are still closed and locked to our athletes. And as far as I'm understanding, we actually have the ability to let our athletes start meeting with coaches and start getting into shape before the season starts in three weeks. And it sure seems to me, based on personal history, a little extra time to, to work through some of the pinks before we start in a natural season. It's probably a good idea. So I don't know if everybody else was aware that that change was made.
Yep.
But I did read that today. It was on a meeting from yesterday from WIAA.
Yeah. George, thanks for bringing that up. That was on my list also, that I'd like to see us find a way for our athletes to start some in-person work, the first or the second.
Well, the, the first, the season actually starts. So we.
Well, yeah, leading up first. And Tony, I saw a response earlier by email that Marty's working on a plan.
We're waiting for a plan.
Okay.
We're waiting for a plan from, from Marty.
Okay. Any hint at a timeline on when we'll see his plan?
I'd have to ask Marty when, when he plans on completing that.
Okay. I believe we'll.
I've been rapping about your, uh, other issues as important. And, uh, yet Lynn and I did meet with Marty and, uh, he outlined, uh, that, uh, WIAA would be providing some direction. Um, we don't have all the information that Marty has and we, we asked him to develop the schedule, a practice schedule, facility schedule, uh, number of students, uh, getting cleared, uh, all the ramifications required for athletic eligibility. And we just look forward to seeing that report. Uh, we want, we want things to move quickly, well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Well, any other board comments from the other board members?
Yes, I would like to make one comment. Um, Melissa and I talked about this with Tony and I want to make it as a, a comment that, um, and it's, I think after tonight's discussion, you'll all agree, is that we really appreciate the ACT format and we want to make sure that, um, as a board, we let our, whoever is our new superintendent know and the public know that we, that we want to continue making sure that we are looking at collaboration and transparency and accountability, that this kind of communication is, is important to us and we want to continue it. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board. Um, so, did I get it right, Melissa?
Yes, Kathy, you did. There's lots of little conversations that happen when we're not all together. And, um, I think this was one as we were preparing for this week's board meeting, when we saw this, um, very robust document and really took the time to read it. I've read it, I think, three times. Um, but, um, just that, yes, I, that's, um, when Tony first came, his first question to me, I recall, and we were able to sit face to face at that time, but, um, what are things that you don't want changed? This is going to be my number one, do not change this particular, um, thing we got going on here. I love the ACT. I love that, the, the whole idea behind it. I love the format in which it's been. Um, and that everybody is participating in this. You could definitely see the department heads in their sections. And, um, yes, so, yes, thank, thank you, Kathy, for bringing that up because it is definitely something I am, uh, very interested in keeping around.
And, and Steve kind of alluded to this and his outlook on this format that, like Melissa just said, I like that we can see that. like Melissa just said, I like that we can see that the department heads and the different um administrators, that they all have a voice in this. And that their voices, maybe not always agreeing, but uh they always have a voice and that it's listened to. Because I really don't see how we can um meet our kids' needs if we can't um all work together. So.
Yeah. I, I, I thought about the um sustainability of ACT when we were working on our board standards and we memorialized it in our standards. So we can use that as a tool to um, you know, have the conversation with superintendent and frankly, regardless of what they decide to do, we've got it in our standards and so we will continue to have it as a priority.
That's great. I forgot about that. Yeah. I thought about that.
All right. Any other comments? We're hearing none. You're going to join the meeting at uh 7:31 PM. You guys have a good night and have a good year.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.